Gary.
Of the three items that we have to consider, I would strongly oppose not funding the project. I get a sense that that's pretty much the general sort. It's going to be who of us now to decide whether to assess it in a more general way or not, but I think that there should be no negotiation, from my perspective, that this project is not funded in any way. So I think we should take that off the table personally. Anyway, just open it up.
And I stand corrected. The, there is a fourth matter for your consideration, and that is the boundary of the Assessment District. So I don't want to mislead any of the council members with respect to that.
Okay. See, I'm trying to-
That's okay. I have a question for him, so go ahead.
Lynn, I think you had your hand up, and then I think JaHa would.
I am, I would first like to state that I totally support this project. I always have and I always will. I think it's extremely important for the betterment of the voting community that we live in. And certainly, it will be a major player for safety, and safety's always been one of my primary concerns for everyone in our city. I'm not completely convinced that this Assessment District is the right way to do it. I have been vocal about this before. I will not in any way hold this project up. I think we need to go full steam ahead. We have the permits, which in some cases are time-sensitive. We have purchased the land. The land deal will be closing early January. We're way further ahead than we've ever been in the 20-plus years I've lived here, and I want to see it happen. I want to see it happen in my lifetime. But I'm very happy that we've gotten this far. I hate that this has become such a divisive thing in our community. I think it's been horrible. I get thousands of emails every week about it because it is in my district. And I really would like us to take another look, before we get to the hearing process, I would like us to take another look at other ways it could be funded. That said, I think we need to move ahead with the resolution so that we have this option on the table. We can always not do the assessment if we find other ways to fund the project in the meantime. But let's keep this thing moving. Let's get this resolution in place so that we can continue, get it on the tax rolls if we need to. But we have to do this by law by January 10th, or we cannot do the assessment on the tax rolls for 2019. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Let's keep it moving. Let's figure out a way to help fund it. Let's find other grant money. Let's do whatever we have to do to help get the money available so it's not going to be such a tax burden to the people in one benefited district, allegedly.
Okay. Thank you. JaHa?
Yeah, I concur with Lynn in regard also, fully in support of us as much as possible trying to find grant money, et cetera. But one thing, I think that we've not been clear enough with the public about what the state law is in regard to difference between taxing and assessments, that we can't arbitrarily decide a benefit area. The history of this project is that when we decided that we were going to go with the assessment methodology, we hired an attorney whose specialty was in setting up special districts. When we put that together, we then had to hire an economist appraiser who then determined what properties would actually benefit. And the reason why this is important is because what we call a tax is a non-exchange revenue. Basically, money's taken for a general benefit. For a fee, special assessment, which is what the world we're in, it has to be, it's an exchange revenue, which basically means we're providing something for a fee, direct benefit to the property. The difference between taxes and assessments is that taxes are a general benefit. Like example, if we were to do a fire fee versus general things. We could not include EMS in that because that was a general benefit. It only could be benefit property. So in our regard, we do have to understand that unless we rehire another economist who would basically would somehow, and I doubt they could be able to do this. I mean, they would have to be able to show, from the standpoint of appraisal, that the entire PGI would benefit from this, which it's not going to show. I mean, we could hire if we want to spend more money and basically have an indecision budget and just spend more money to have someone tell us the exactly same benefit area we have now. We could do that. But we can't, we need the public to understand that we don't arbitrarily decide benefit area. This is something that's been done by a professional whose qualifications is in property value. And so from that determination, in the same manner that the PGI Canal District and BSI Canal District, they, based on benefit areas. This is not arbitrary. I think it's very important that we all understand this because I don't want us to mislead the public as to believe that we, there's subjectivity with this. There's not. We only can assess a benefit area. If we were to hire another economist who came up with a different determination that other properties also benefited, then they could be assessed the same. But I think that we just, I don't feel that we've been force-fed enough in terms of really actually saying what the law in Florida is. In Florida, taxes and assessments are different. It's not arbitrary. And we have to just make sure that the public understands this, and we make sure that we understand this, that as of the moment, right now, we have a benefit area that's been determined by an economist appraiser, and therefore, that's the only area that can be assessed. And as Lynn said, I believe for now, we should approve this resolution. If we want to look at, you know, the benefit area thing again in February, we can do that. But I, we don't have the subjectivity that's assumed, and I just wanted to state that.
Okay. Debbie, you have questions? Excuse me, the public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My question is, once this resolution that we are discussing, once it gets approved, the boundary area is then set in stone. Is that correct?
For, if you want to get it on the tax bill in 2019.
Okay.
If you want it on the tax bill in 2019, yes.
Okay.
But you still have some public hearings in February and April.
Okay.
And so this is just an intent.
Okay. So if we were, so we, I guess the question I have goes along with what Debbie is saying. So if we approve this today-
Yes.
Because I understand, we've been through this before with Prince Dorales. This is procedural. If, when we have these public hearings, and if we were to decide to pursue something that would be broader across PGI as a whole, as opposed to-
Right.
A specific subset, then we could, we could follow different funding methodology. We could choose to have a different funding methodology.
If you decided in February that you wanted to expand the district, there will be no assessment on the tax bill in 2019. Can't be done. We would have to go back, hire the legal attorney, to then come up with the methodology for how to assess across this new boundary, make sure that the economist is still on board, and that legal attorney, the legal attorney that we have, will have to determine whether everyone's going to pay the same, or will there be a sliding scale? We have to go through the whole process again. So that's where we would stand.
Nancy.
Yes, Debbie?
Two things. I wanted that on the record so that people understood why we're doing what we're doing. I would like to just, as a personal aside, say that I am 100% in favor of Buckley Pass. There've been a lot of discussions that I was going to try to scuttle this project. That's absolutely not true. What I have said all along is that if we had been able to tell everybody how much it cost before we decided, the assessment units and the boundaries and all of this, I think a lot of this discussion wouldn't have happened. I think people are just scared of what the dollar amount is going to be. And I think that that's, you know, I understand it's a reality of government doing business, but I do think that that is one of the big factors. And hopefully, by looking for outside grants and outside funding, and hopefully, if the MAC comes through, we can reduce some of that fear by the February meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we politically have to show the courage of how we're going to move forward and continue this project. This staff of ours in this wonderful city has a very good record of finding monies. We have to go on faith that they're going to find as much money as potentially available. If it's enough to pay for the whole thing, great. And if it's not, whatever it is, it's going to be what it is. We still have the opportunity, if I understand it, if it turns out to be a $50 million project, we can still scuttle the project. You know me, I use exaggerated numbers to make my point. At the same time, I do have a question, and that's how many units are we discussing that are in the, at present allocated district? And how many are in PGI altogether? How many housing units are we looking that this would be spread over? What's the rough number?
This is water access units.
Yes, exactly.
Not housing units, water access.
Water access units, yes.
Mikael Finkel for the record. Staff has done some preliminary on the water access units. The total water access units are 2,785. Would affect approximately 2,112 property, Charlotte County property accounts. As far as the entire PGI district, that information was, we didn't undertake that because that was not the direction.
I'd be curious just to know at this point in time, at some point in time, that we should be aware of that if we were to decide to change the district. However, I don't think we should be procrastinating on moving this project forward at this point. So I think we have to make our decision and go forward.
Lynn?
One thing we haven't addressed is, in the public notice that was in the newspaper, it was defined as "ongoing," and we've had a lot of questions about that. And Howard, can you allude to that for us, please?
Sure. When you talk about ongoing, we will be offering, hopefully, council approval, a payment period of anywhere between three, four, or five years, yet to be determined. We don't want to put such a financial burden on everyone that they have to pay the whole thing upfront. We want to make it so that they can pay that assessment off over a three, four, or five-year timeframe. That's why the advertisement says continuing, because it will continue for the like amount of when the payment period is. Once that payment period ends, three, four, or five years, the assessment is done. And then any ongoing maintenance for the canal navigational channel will be rolled into the entire Puntagorda Isles Canal Maintenance District.
Okay, but they can pay it in one lump sum?
Oh, yes. Yeah, you can pay it in one lump sum.
That was reported earlier as well, as not being available, and that's what I had heard previously as well. Someone could pay in full.
Yeah, I got a lot of questions about that.
Yes. Okay. Is it something that staff could come up with, just for the future, for us to understand what the total of all of PGI would be, so that it's information that we have? I know it might take-
You mean water access units?
Well-
Do you know what it took to do just this section? In other words, we have to look at every single property, and we have to analyze every single property to determine how many water access units are eligible for that property. That's a massive undertaking for all of PGI.
Can we offer a definition of water access unit? Because that's-
That was asked, and I think that would be helpful.
Sure, Mikael Finkel. That actually is defined in the methodology report.
Well, it's not. It's really not.
Water access is a dock, a unit, a dock, a slip, a boat lift. So for instance, on a single-family lot that's under 85 feet, they are only allowed by right under the current code to have one dock or boat slip. So they would get one water access unit. The, let me pull out my cheat sheet here. Single-family property with odor, over 85 feet under current code can have one dock or two, dock, a lift, outpilings or outpilings, and two boat lifts, they would be assessed two water access units. When you get into the multi-family, that's when you get into the length of their seawall, the width of the canal, how many units that can be built on the upland property, and that's all been calculated. Our Public Works engineering staff has gone in, used the platted lots, and taken the, it's called CAD, I'm not exactly sure what it stands for, AutoCAD, the drawing, to draw in what the potential for those properties could be, and that's how the water access units are determined.
Okay. Can we publish that information in the newsletter this week, please? I'd like to be able to have that available. I have had a lot of questions about water access unit definition. It's really not spelled out that well in the stuff that you referenced. So specifically with lengths of seawalls, that was one of the items that was a big question.
Sure. I do, I don't know if this would help. This is our chart. I don't know if this is, you know, the city code is a little bit confused. We could put something like this, a chart. It does show, you know, what can be built, the docks, the boat lift, and then the number of water access units that might be. If that's, if you think that would be helpful, I know in words, it's-
It might be helpful to have some of a narrative explanation, but then put this up on the website somewhere-
Yeah.
So that you can link to it, because it is a lot of information. And as long as we can link to it, then let people have access to it. It's, I think that would be very helpful.
We are planning to, as we go through the water access units, to get those maps that Mr. Dishar has created available on the website. It will take some time. They're very large maps, a lot of information, you know. So before the February hearing, our intent was to have that information available so you could physically go look at your parcel and see how we came up with what we came up with. And just so everyone knows, the website already has a dedicated page under Capital Projects. It's the Buckley's Pass that has past council stuff, methodology report, economist, all that information available in one place. So we will make sure to get this up there as well.
Mikael, can you explain why there's a difference between the way we assess a canal maintenance parcel, you know, which is based on your lot size? Why did they go to water access units for this? Because, I mean, that's causing a lot of confusion, too.
Let me-
Unfortunately, yeah, I can't. That was done by the methodology the legal council hired, and that was the methodology they put forth to the council.
Well, I read that report, and I couldn't understand it.
Let me offer this as sort of a general answer to that.
Okay.
The canal maintenance assessment that we've all been paying for both the BSI and PGI districts is based on per lot. And there's been suggestions that there's other ways that that could be done. Square, linear feet of shoreline is one. And that's not to say that that's unreasonable. And in fact, we've been, we've received a lawsuit recently challenging the methodology that has been in place for quite some time as it relates to the canal maintenance assessment districts. But bear in mind, the purpose of that assessment deals with seawall replacement, deals with maintenance of the canals themselves, dredging, and all things that benefit property owners, even if they're not boaters or even if they don't even live here. Whereas, the distinction between that more generalized assessment and this one is that this actually relates to a particular project that while it benefits those other things, and that's why it's, everyone is going to be asked to contribute to it within the district area, is primarily a benefit towards boating. And so there is some overlap, but it's more particular for what the boating access and the ability for getting in and out from the, from that, the area of this new district, I think is, is the water access units are more directed towards what amenities that you have at your property with respect to boating activity. So that if you have a dock, if you have more than one boat lift, et cetera, it's a fairer way, according to our attorneys, to assess that particular improvement versus the general maintenance of the canal system in general, which is funded by, principally by the assessments in the other districts.
So we're saying, if you have enough room for two docks, even though you only have one dock, we're going to charge you for two?
I believe that's the methodology correct.
Yeah, the maximum of what can be built by right under the current-
And again, the others is based on the fact that everyone's got a seawall. Everyone enjoys the quality of the water. Everyone benefits, their property benefits by being on the water, and the value that that adds versus non-waterfront property.
I understand.
I understand it is a fine distinction between the two, but that is why this is more specific to the opportunity for water boating amenities.
JaHa?
One thing, putting this back in perspective, is that those in a benefit area are expected to receive a property increase of about $80,000. And this is, no, this is the thing. One thing about it is that, on one hand, we can't poo-poo the profession of economists and appraisers. On one hand, but on the other hand, our whole real estate industry is built on this. We can't decide when and where we like appraisal. If we believe the real estate industry is on us and aboard, then we use these tools. We use these tools. We can't say, I like this tool, this time, I don't like this tool this time. With that said, if we don't, if we want to go into the indecision budget realm of just spending money again, I fairly doubt that any appraiser economist is going to say that the northwest quadrant of PGI, like example Jamaica Way, Colony Point, et cetera, is going to receive that kind of significant increase in property value based on a cut-through down at the southeast portion. I'm just, right now, I'm just speculating. I'm not an appraiser or property appraiser. But my point is, is that we've gone through this process. We've hired the best in the business to determine the benefit area, and they've determined what the benefit would be to properties. That's where we are. And I mean, I actually moved that we approve this resolution.
There's been a motion to approve. Is there any more discussion before? Is there a second? There's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. So I'll call the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I will add, there's lots more to be discussed about this in the future. We are moving this forward, and I'm happy that we are moving this forward for our community. Thank you. Okay. Do we need to take a break, or are we?
Yes.
Five minutes?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. I have 10:17. We'll be back at 10:22. Thank you.
Let's see, what's the next one? Don't get used to it.
They think that my one vote's going to make a difference.
It's like during the campaign. Somebody put on next door that I wanted to fundraise for Rachel.
The City Council meeting is now back in session. And let it be, for the record, Gary Wine has been excused. And that is why, that's why Debbie Carey has moved over. Gary was, had to go to visit grandchildren, so. Okay. We will, we have no quayside judicial public hearings. We do have an ordinance, a resolution, SV-01-18.
And so we will, actually, this is-
Oh, we have to have citizen comments on this, don't we?
Technically, this is a resolution that does not require a public hearing. However, we do require public comment on any item, whether it's a public hearing or not. So if anybody would like to speak towards this item, this would be the opportunity.
Should you read it first before we have?
Well, we're not really, we're not opening, if we were opening the public hearing, I would then read it, so.
Okay. So if anyone would like to speak on Resolution SV-01-18, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll proceed.
Okay. So this is SV-01-18, a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, declaring its intent to consider vacating a tract or parcel of land lying in Section 12, Township 41 South, Range 22 East, Charlotte County, Florida, being a part of Block 11 of the City of Puntagorda, per the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 15, public records of Charlotte County, Florida, being more particularly described as follows. The 10-foot alleyway between lots 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 of said Block 11 of the City of Puntagorda and lots 21 and 26 of said Block 11, together with that portion of the 10-foot alleyway lying between lots 21 and 26 of said Block 11 of the City of Puntagorda, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached to the, ordinance or resol, should it say ordinance or resolution? It does read ordinance. I think it would be attached to the resolution-
Resolution.
And made a part thereof, and providing an effective date, requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and fixing a public hearing thereon.
Okay. Council?
Let's hear from staff.
Oh, staff. Lisa, thank you.
Lisa Hannan, zoning official, for the record. This is just the intent to vacate. The public hearing will go before Planning Commission in December, and back to City Council in January.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions for Lisa?
I move for approval.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. So all council members, please signify by saying aye. If you approve?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? The motion carries. So we will move forward and hear this back in January?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Perfect. Now we move on to the consent agenda. And any citizens wishing to comment on consent agenda items? I guess I should ask the council if there is anything you would want to remove from the consent agenda? No? Okay. So if there's any comments on consent agenda items, the approval of our minutes, the monthly litigation report, the invoice from our attorney, and a finance department request to reclassify the purchase of Buckley's Pass from Special Use Fund. Okay.
Good morning.
Kathy, you have three minutes?
I haven't been sworn?
No need to be sworn for this.
A question on the litigation report this morning. The last item was a lawsuit that's been brought for an event that was at the boaters' club. And the city is being sued for that. Can you explain that a little, do you mind explaining that, what that is?
Well, I'll ask my paralegal to explain it. It's not something that the city attorney is directly involved in.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Kathy, Mikael Finkel.
Hi, Mikael.
I'm not familiar with the lawsuit, but the boat club, the city leases that property to the boat club. So in the grand scheme of things, usually when there's litigation, the city would be cited along with the boat club.
Along with?
Yeah. So what, those, that would be assigned to one of our liability insurance attorneys, who will defend the case on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Typically, the city gets sued on anything that's related to city property, whether we're at fault or not. And it's city property.
And as our paralegal has pointed out, generally speaking, it is our insurance attorneys outside the fund that represent the city in those matters.
Okay. Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda. And the first thing we have on the regular agenda, again, are citizens' comments on regular agenda items. We have the budget transfer from the storm sewer reconstruction to the Sailfish Bridge and Park Wooden Pathways and Pier Pilings to help fund those projects. Award of an Agreement to Strickler Brothers Underground of Fort Myers for the water main improvement on Sullivan's Street in West Olympia. A resolution of the City Council authorizing the submission of a grant request to the Marine Advisory Committee for the funding of Buckley's Pass. We have a hurricane seawall, Irma seawall update. We have safety barriers for special events, and interchange commercial zoning district. That's a new zoning classification. So if there are any citizens' comments on any of those items, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Don't everybody rush at once. Okay. Well, I guess we're going to move on. So regular agenda items, we'll start with the budget transfer from the storm sewer reconstruction, too.
Good morning. Mark Garing, Public Works. We come to you today to do a budget transfer. These are funds that we have in one account for storm sewer reconstruction that we'd like to move to two other accounts so we can cover maintenance needs. The first one being Sailfish Bridge. That's the second bridge as you head out Marion. DOT does inspections on them every two years. And in the last set of inspections, they've noticed that a lot of the soil under the bridge around the pilings has washed away. So we're going to be putting, it's called articulating concrete blocks. We use them on the Harbor Walk over in the area- in the area of MLK or Mylis. They're concrete blocks with holes in them. They're all wired together, and they set them down with heavy equipment, and it covers the bottom and keeps the bottom from eroding further. First, they'll fill in the holes, and then they'll place those blocks. In our bridge fund, we usually put about, we put $10,000 per year in to cover things like seals and grouting and stuff like that. This project's going to cost around $118,000, so it would take many years of that $10,000 accumulating. So that's the first project. The second one is something that we had in the CIP this past year, but it was unfunded, and that is our wooden piers and pilings along the Harbor Walks. We've got piers all over, starting down by the hospital, behind the Justice Center, behind the Harbor Walk condos, Gilcrest Park, Ponce Park, Nature Park. We've got them all over the place, and we've not done a whole lot with them in many years. Last year, we had the pier directly behind the Justice Center, just the one that juts out. We rebuilt that with the money that we had available last year. This year, we need to immediately take care of the Harbor Walk pathway as it turns and goes around the Justice Center. And what we're, our first work order will be for pile jackets. That is a method where they take the old wooden pile that's rotted, either fully or partially, and they put a sleeve around it with a separation, and they fill that sleeve with epoxy. That locks the whole piling together. What we saw on the Justice Center pier, the pier was in very good shape except for this much of the pilings. Two foot of the pilings right at the water line is what rots out. The rest of the wood was great. We were able to rebuild that one for $10,000 to $20,000. I can't remember, but... So we're going to, we'd like to move $100,000 to that account, and we'll start with the pile jacket projects. And over the next few years, we'll be adding other projects similar to this into the CIP so that we can take care of the things, the handrails and the decks and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So that's what we're requesting, move $200,000 from the storm sewer account. We have two pipes to do storm sewer relining on. They cost about $50,000 apiece. We're holding off on that, though, because getting the contractor to town, the mobilization is the biggest part of that. So we will continue to fund that account, and in a couple of years, we'd like to call them in and actually have them do four or five at that time. But at that time, that account will be built back up to do four or five. So we think we'll be in good shape with this budget transfer.
Okay. Other questions for Mark?
Move approval of the budget transfer from storm sewer reconstruction to Sailfish Bridge and Park Wooden Pathways and Pier Pilings.
There's been a motion and a second for this particular budget item. And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And get those projects done. I know you did a great job on helping us do the one for the Justice Center in a really cost-effective manner, so thank you. Okay, the next item, award of an agreement to Strickler Brothers Underground.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Anne Heinen, procurement, for the record. Our staff recommends award of an agreement to Strickler Brothers Underground of Fort Myers for water main improvements on Sullivan Street and West Olympia Avenue. The project will include removing and replacing 110 linear feet of water main. The lump sum cost for the project is $129,777.44. Timeline for completion of the project is 60 consecutive days after the notice to proceed. Strickler Brothers have completed projects for the city previously, and those include sewer reconstruction on Carmelita, replacement of manhole on Olympia, and water main repair on Washington Loop. Our staff is also present to provide any details of the project and any questions that you do have.
Thank you. All right, Tom, you want to give us some more information?
Sure, a little bit more. Tom Jackson, Utilities Department, for the record. As Anne said, we do a lot of work with Strickler Brothers. They're one of the top, in our opinion, underground contractors in the area. This project, 110 feet of waterline, the waterline broke some time ago, and due to its proximity to the stormwater drain, as well as being on Sullivan Street, which is a busy street in town, we decided, looking at it from an engineering standpoint, it would be better to replace that older pipe and reconfigure it away from the stormwater drain so that it would last a lot longer, and we don't have to worry about it anymore. The problem is, it's on Sullivan Avenue. We, with Strickler Brothers, when we have the pre-construction meeting with them, we have put in their contract, we expect them, we're going to build the line completely in place and then tie it in at night so that none of the businesses downtown will be out of water. We'll do the tie-in. This once the line's built, they won't even know it occurred. Secondly, the paving, the repaving of Sullivan will occur at night, so it'll have very minimal impacts, hopefully, for any traffic on that street. Unfortunately, the excavation work itself, to get to the line and work around the stormwater drain, we're going to have to close one lane of Sullivan Street, open it, and then close the next lane.
Olympia.
Olympia. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got Sullivan on my mind. On Olympia to get to Sullivan, yes.
Okay. And that's the one thing I think that the residents are going to be the most
Yeah.
sensitive to, because we've had such a long duration of one, the lane closure in that area.
Yes.
We've all suffered from resident comments, and we understand that. So anything that we can do in our weekly communication to assure people this is, we're handling this in a very expeditious manner. We're on top of it.
In our pre-construction, and again, the two-week timeline was an estimate that we, the Strickler Brothers gave us before we actually sat down in the pre-construction meeting. We're going to do everything we can to make that quicker, if possible, obviously. And again, with the stormwater work that was done on the Olympia, we're very sensitive to the traffic issues down in that area.
Comments? Lynn?
Does this have anything to do with what was going on on Olympia?
No.
Is this totally separate?
Totally separate.
Because someone asked me that, and I said I didn't know the answer.
Yes, no, no. I wish we could have done both.
Yes, but that would have really caused problems.
Yes.
So when are we talking about getting this project done?
Notice to proceed, if you approve this procurement, we'll do notice to proceed very quickly, and we'll schedule a meeting with them as fast as we can. We hope to, in the next two to three weeks, have them started.
And the length of time for the project to be done is a couple of weeks?
Well, we've given them 60 days, but we're looking at the lane closure because they've got to stage, they've got to deploy, stage, do that sort of stuff. We're looking at possibly two weeks of lane closure only. And the rest of the time, they'll be working out of the traffic area.
Okay. So entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agreement to Strickler Brothers.
There's been a motion and a second on this budget item. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And I know that you'll get started as quickly as possible, although with the holidays coming up, I don't know that they might not start until January, potentially.
It's hard to get work done in December.
Yes.
Yes. Good.
Thank you for staying on top of it for our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay. Next item, a resolution of the City Council authorizing submission of a boater revolving fund grant application to the MAC.
Yes, this is a resolution which I'll read by title only. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, authorizing submission of a boater revolving fund grant application to the Charlotte County Marine Advisory Committee, MAC, for the Buckley's Pass additional harbor access project, authorizing the city manager to sign all grant documents and administer the grant on behalf of the city and providing an effective date.
This is a grant application for $500,000. We discussed this at a previous council meeting. Our MAC lay is on. We'll be with the MAC committee along with city staff when it's presented. If we're successful, all these funds will be used towards the project construction, which will thereby reduce aid assessment. We won't know until the MAC committee meets anywhere from March to April, and then the budget gets put together by the county, and the county commissioners approve that budget in September. So it's going to be a long time till we finally find out how much, if any, are we going to get.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Let's find five or six more just like it.
Yeah. Don't we wish we could?
I wholeheartedly endorse this. I motion to approve the resolution for the MAC grant.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the MAC grant application. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And motion carries. And we hope that we are wildly successful.
Mostly.
Okay. Next, we have a Hurricane Irma Seawall update. So, good morning, Mark. It is still morning, right?
Good morning again, Mark Garing, Public Works, reporting on the Seawall update. We have hit a snag with our FEMA funding in relation to our Army Corps of Engineers permit. Our Army Corps Engineers permit says that we are not to place any riprap. FEMA tells us that all of our outfalls should be armored, and they also want a mitigation project of armoring the rest of the seawalls. What this boils down to is, we have $28 million of funding we're looking for from FEMA for the seawall replacement, along with $8 million of mitigation funding for additional riprap. As it stands now, FEMA has that all lumped together as one project to award us eventually $36 million. We're asking FEMA, with your permission, to break that into two projects. The permitting for the seawall restoration's much easier through Army Corps and National Marine Fisheries. We can separate that, get our funds obligated, get reimbursed for that. We'll continue to work toward the mitigation project, the $8 million project. FEMA wants us very much to complete that, but National Marine Fisheries says that riprap is not good for the small-toothed sawfish, and we could have a very uphill battle trying to put 10 miles of riprap along our seawalls. So we'll continue to work on that, meet with those folks, and see where we can go. But we think it's in the best interest of the city if we split the two projects apart, try to secure the $28 million, and then work toward the other $8 million, and if it's at all possible to get the money, excuse me, to get the permit for the riprap. With your consent, we'll continue working in that direction.
Comments? Lynn?
How close are we to getting FEMA's payback?
I will have to turn that over to Finance.
I mean, is this contingent upon them giving us money if we make this decision today?
Right now, we have a holdup. We are not going to get any money until we get this worked out with the permitting agency.
And is FEMA amenable to doing this?
Kristen Simeone, Finance Director. So we met with FEMA, along with engineering, and they would like us to continue working on it. And they don't necessarily want to separate the project, but they do want to obligate the 28 million while we continue to work on that project. But again, they still have to go to their upper management to try and see if that will be something that would be possible. Otherwise, it may just have to be completely separate projects. And as far as receiving any funding right now, FEMA has not even obligated our, fully obligated our project, so that has gone to the state. And then once it gets to the state, we have to wait for them to obligate the project. So we are still a ways away.
And with regard to this riprap, are we talking about the entire canal system that they're going to put it in, or just the new seawalls, or what do they want?
It would only be on the seawalls that we're replacing under the FEMA project. They will not do the riprap or allow us to do the riprap under, for the older seawalls.
It's very concerning. It is concerning, but this is what FEMA is suggesting that we do in order for us to proceed, is to separate these two, so that we can proceed to get the finance, the reimbursement.
Right. They're working on their end as well of how, how to, whether it's separated or still stays together, but they obligate the first portion, knowing that we may have a problem with our permit on the riprap.
Okay. So what this is doing, then, we are working with you all to help us, then give us the flexibility of getting it done, is what I'm saying. Okay.
And we just wanted to make you aware of that situation as well.
Yes, and I understand with the National Marine Fisheries, and can be a long process, and we just don't know. But thank you for pursuing it because it is helping us preserve the life of our seawall system. So is there a motion to...
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval? Okay, is there a second? There's a second. There's been a motion and a second to approve splitting the funds has been suggested. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay, the next item, under new business, it's safety barriers for special events.
We received, we all received an email from a gentleman who was at a downtown BASH event, when we had, another individual had a medical incident, and the vehicle was crashed into the Sunlaw parking garage. So from that, the person is suggesting that in all downtown events, whether it be a one-night event, or parades, or you name it, that the city measures in place that protect the folks that are at these events from any such vehicular type accidents in the future. So we have a lot of questions that are raised by that. And that is, what types of barriers would we contemplate? Who's going to pay for the cost of those barriers? Who's going to install them and take them out for each event? What events are we talking about? We have an event Saturday called the Christmas Parade. Are we expecting to put up the Christmas Parade to pay for the Charlotte County Chamber, to pay for barriers at every single intersection along the parade route? We have the Charlotte County Homecoming Parade. We have the Martin Luther King Parade. We have the Veterans Day Parade. We had the tree lighting last Friday night. Yes, we closed off a street. The block party closes off streets. Now, fortunately, they put musical stages at the intersections. Could a car drive around those stages and come in? I guess if somebody's having a medical incident. Every Saturday, we have the farmer's market. What are we going to be expecting the farmer's market to do? And we do have downtown BASHs. We have events at Marketplace property. So there's a number of questions that are raised by this. The question is, from our viewpoint, how much do we want to pursue this?
Lisa, do you have something that you wish to add? Chaha?
I personally think this would change the entire color of our city. I mean, it would just make it, you know, basically jail. I don't, I'm not in support of this at all.
Lynn?
I totally agree. I think this would be the end of our events in the downtown community, and I think that would just totally destroy what Punta Gorda represents. Unfortunately, it happened because of a medical incident. It was an isolated incident, and I think it's complete overreach on the part of city government to try to put anything in place as an ordinance or a rule that people would have to adhere to. Not only that, we don't have funds to be doing this kind of a project. One example that was given in our package, one community paid over $500,000 for bollards. I mean, we could do an awful lot of money, a lot of projects with $500,000. You know, there are other ways that we can encourage event planners to cordon off their areas. I've talked with John from the Chamber, and one of the things that could be done is that they can park cars across an intersection. In the case of like the downtown BASH, they could park two cars to block off that street. It won't completely prohibit anybody from driving through it if there was an incident. However, it would keep people out. It would be one way of doing it. But if you're talking about bringing in cement highway barriers, who's going to bring them in, and who's going to bring them out, and do it in a timely manner on a weekend when there's an event going on?
Yeah, moving Jersey walls in and out is not an easy task. Well, yes, Debbie?
And it's not, cars running over people or, you know, violating space isn't the only thing. I mean, what's next? Metal detectors? You know, we have people carrying guns walking through our events. We can't, we can't do that. That's just not the fiber of this city.
Yeah. It's, the other thing, I think it was mentioned, it was a medical incident. A medical incident can happen at any time. It doesn't happen just, it's not exclusive to events. So that would mean we need to have it all the time, have some kind of barrier system all around our whole city to protect ourselves. And I don't think that that's going to be practical.
Well, and in this event, it wouldn't have helped anyway because it was a parking garage, and you're not going to put a concrete barrier up- garage. And you're not gonna put a concrete barrier up at the parking garage. I don't think we need them.
Okay, so I'm--
Do we need some kind of a motion on this?
No, I think this kinda died a slow death here.
Okay, okay.
Well, as much as I would like to say, safety is a critical issue, but I just think that this is something we should not pursue.
I would agree with you. I think that, you know, having safety as a, for individual businesses or whatever, that's certainly fine. Having bollards in front of the Publix, where people are going into the grocery store, that's certainly one thing. But for us to do this in general is not necessary at this time. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, we have a discussion. I know that staff has been working on this for quite some time, and that's the Interchange Commercial Zoning District.
It's here for your discussion, Lisa Hanen, zoning official. The ordinance is, it's just a draft, and it's here for your discussion.
Yeah, we put together a draft based on previous discussion. We want to have council weigh in before we even contemplate pursuing it through any of the Planning Commission and Land Development Regulation Committee. We just need to know where we want to go with this. We do have an upcoming master plan process on its way.
Mm-hmm. Comments? Lynn?
I think it's a really good ordinance. However, I would like to take it a step further. I would like for this to also be applicable to properties on the 41 corridor and also the 17 corridor, because I think those are just as important for future development. And I think I'd like to give potential developers an opportunity to use this as their guideline for building code.
Okay. Debbie?
Is there a reason that we are pursuing this ahead of the master plan, looking at this area?
There is.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, last, well, I don't even know if it's last year. It's when we approved, when Aldi, what came to us to build.
Right.
And Aldi, they are currently in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. And what that says is that the building needs to be up at the road, which is why we have the 711 built toward 41. And Aldi said, no, we want to be back with parking in front. And it was determined by, the Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended that these, that we establish a new category of, for our zoning that would allow for this. It's more appropriate out along the interstate and in that area to have this type of, with the parking in the front.
So, this would be done, and then the master plan would just say, okay, this is what you have.
Forget the master plan for a minute, okay?
Okay.
The master plan wasn't even in the discussion at the time.
Okay.
It was, all there was, was this Aldi. And Aldi is, was the catalyst to bring this forward.
I remember those discussions.
And then, and then the City Council concurred with the Planning Commission, and so, we asked staff to start to work on developing this highway, or interchange commercial classification. I know that staff has been working on this for--